Thanks very much Pam for the opportunity. Welcome to Tropical Queenstown. It's certainly a warm day. But yeah, we're delighted to be involved as a co-host with Better Work Tasmania. I can certainly, as a member of Better Work Tasmania, vouch for the effectiveness and quality of the programs and I'm sure today will be no exception. So thanks for Pam making the effort to have three excellent speakers here today. Just a bit of news about our organisation, A W O N A. I think most of the people in the audience are members, but there is a bit of information there on the table if you're not aware of our organisation. But we're about to turn 100 next year. And our inaugural members were the Mount Lyell Rowan Mining Company and Broken Hill Corporation. So we're in the course of planning events and I'm very keen to get some events in Tasmania. So look forward to that space. On a personal note, I've had a fifth in my time of 100 years. I've had 20 years with Emma next year and I'll be finishing up next year, much to my wife's disgust, but I've got to have to manage that somehow. But and next year I'll be working two days a week, but there won't be any depletion of services. We're a national organisation, we have a Melbourne office and we're not exactly sure what will happen next year, but I'll certainly be working Mondays and Wednesdays and any other days you need me for urgent advice, that's not usually a problem. So welcome along, I'm sure it's going to be a valuable session. We'll also have some briefings next year in Burnie and Strawn like we did last year. And it's probably the last occasion before Christmas for everyone here today, particularly Emma members, Merry Christmas and have a safe holiday period and Happy New Year as well. So I'll hand it back to Pam. Thanks for the opportunity again Pam.
Thank you very much Bill. Okay, so we'll move right along to our first speaker which is Stephen Dowling. The title of his presentation is 'Our Mining Challenge', 'Mental Health Challenge: Overcoming the Stigma of Mental Health Illness'. Stephen has worked as a community ambassador for Are You OK and mental health first aid instructor. Stephen has increased his focus on reducing the risk of psychological injury in mental health as well as physical safety. And he's also a past Vice President of BHP, so welcome Stephen.
Thank you, thank you Pam and good morning everyone. What I'm going to do is provide you an overview of mental illness in Australia, then I'll start to focus on the mining industry, particularly work that I did in Western Australia with fly-in, fly-out workers. My view would be when you look at this information and the evidence-based research that I present, think of the workplaces that you currently work in and the, normally the continuous shift rosters that people struggle with. The other issue for Tasmania is a lot of your mining communities are in remote areas of the state where there are limited resources. And certainly that's the issue that strikes home in other parts of Australia. The challenge with mental health is that 3 million Australians are living with depression or anxiety and 7% of workers develop clinically depressed symptoms in any one year. That means 1 in 5 people could be experiencing mental illness in the last 12 months. So normally when I say 1 in 5, everyone looks around the room and thinks which one of us is it today? And I hope it's not the guy at the front. The way I want you to think about 1 in 5 is think about everyone that comes to your kitchen table. Think about your family, your friends, your neighbours, your neighbour's kids. Think about the people that you work with. Think about the social groups, the sporting groups that you're in. Think about the people that are on your Facebook group. Think about 1 in 5 in that sort of community, the community of people that are relevant to you and relevant to your family. And guess what? You'll probably see people that are struggling. And hopefully this presentation will give you some guidance in where to go and what to do with the material. Okay, thank you. That's all right. That's a bit easier, thank you. One of the issues that you find in rural, regional and remote communities, including mining, is the impact of mental health. And if you have a look at the numbers, they track from left to right, you can see numbers getting larger are bad and you can see that the rates per 100,000 in population become double in some aspects of the numbers as they track through major cities, interregional, remote and then very remote. So people are being struck down at a rate that's far greater than the 1 in 5 calculation that I showed you before. That's an average and we know what average do, average numbers do to statistics. The other issue that you find in remote communities or those that have limited access to resources is that timely diagnosis, treatment and ongoing management of mental health is likely not to occur or to occur much later in terms of the illness. So when people become unwell, their recovery takes much longer because the intervention to put them on the road to the recovery comes so much later. And you can see in hospitalisation rates and the number of bed days in major cities, and once again, track right as you get further and further away from cities and less access to resources, the numbers get worse. Do these numbers surprise you at all? No? I can see a number of people shaking their heads. Particularly if you're active in your community, you'll know the stories, you'll see the human damage of these issues when people go missing for three months or four months. And in my town of Broken Hill, we used to say that, you know, Bill or Jill or Jack or John or Joan, they've had a touch of the nerves and we wouldn't see them for about six months. And then as they re-entered back into the community, it was always a struggle because they'd been disconnected from those family supports and those friend supports while they sought treatment and never, people then didn't know how to approach them, what to say, what to do and how to manage it when they re-emerged in the community. And it could be after a treatment that lasted, and you look at the number of bed days up to six months. Mental illness, and this is a demographic graph of when people are struck down with mental illness, and you can see through the teenage years, it really increases. So the best advice that I could give to you if you have teenagers, don't think it's a phase that they're going through. If they do show any signs and symptoms of depression or anxiety, scoop them up and get them to your local GP so they can be assessed and they can, because you never know what you could be dealing with. So, you know, once again, if I look at my youth, when people were struggling in teenage years in Broken Hill, it would be, oh, they'll work through it, it's just a phase that they're going through. And you'll hear those comments made around kitchen tables from time to time in terms of the impact of this. But as you can see from these statistics, most people are struck down through their prime working lives. And I'll give you more and more granular material around what causes some of those events and how you can actually bring about constructive change. What's the impact on the person? Mental illness, as I said, tends to occur most during prime years. There's an extra workload on coworkers and supervisors. So when our little organisation is brought into large corporations, small businesses or even micro businesses, it's normally by people that just can't carry people any longer. And they're struggling to maintain the workload. And people will carry people with an illness, whether it be physical or mental, a long way for a long time, but then they start to get tired. And when they don't know what to do, it's, we've just had enough, can you get rid of this person, can you find me a new one? Because we just don't know what to do and how to do it. And that puts workplaces in a state of crisis depending on what the circumstances are and the individuals affected. 1 in 5 take sick leave due to a mental health problem. The longer the sick leave, the less likely they return to work. And eventually people find it difficult to hold down a job, unemployment and early retirement. 78% of full-time workers don't seek treatment. So if you've got a workplace where you've got 500 people, let's play the numbers game, of that 500, 100 could be struggling. 78 of that 100 won't seek any form of treatment. So what we'll do is we'll talk through the reasons why they don't seek treatment and how you can improve help-seeking behaviour. So people know where to go, what to do and are encouraged to go. We talked about the length of delay in help-seeking. It's really the strongest predictor of long-term sick leave, so the longer a person's takes to seek help. If you've got a festering sore on your arm and you don't treat it, does it get better or does it get worse? Physical illnesses, mental illnesses, the earlier you get the treatment, the right treatment, the right support, people start to recover, they start to feel better and they carry on with their lives. Now workplaces can be three things and I'll take you through this over the next 20 minutes. They can be a place where work can be engaging, uplifting and satisfying and bring positive meaning to your life. Or they can be traumatising, disengaging and harmful. And what that does is bring additional risks to your life. An environment where people can learn and grow and that can be a setting for intervention. And that's what I'll take you through in some detail. What can you do in your workplace to put your workplace on the right path to ensure those that could be struggling, the 78 that we talked about, 78%, how can you encourage them to seek treatment, stay with treatment and recover and lead healthy, happy, productive working lives? Let's take a look at the first one. I was working in emergency services with 000 service. Could you imagine the calls that 000 people receive? You know, when you ring 000, it's never a happy day, is it? But they take great pride in what they do and what we did was put in place a program for them so they could manage the vicarious trauma that they'd hear over the phones. They received 6,000 calls a day. And of those 6,000 calls, people are in crisis and suffering through no fault of their own. In fact, you'll hear me say that a lot today, that people are suffering, normally suffering in silence, and they're certainly suffering through no fault of their own. Why is work good for you? Evidence-based research and you'll see on all the slides that I present to you today, references down the bottom. My opinions aren't important, what I've done is harvests the best practice research on these issues around the world and put it together in one pack. So then you can focus on what's important for you and you can use what's relevant for you, whether you be a large business, a multinational business, a small business or even a micro business. We run these programs for hairdressers. We run these programs for half a dozen plumbers in the one suburb in capital cities so they can prepare themselves because no one cares for small business. No one cares for the suffer, suffering that they have and the financial disadvantage they have because they just don't have the time to access resources because they're always trying to make a dollar. So don't just think this is a Vice President from a BHP talking to you about these issues. Whilst I do and have worked in a global presence, we work all the way down the chain of command in terms of size and complexity of business. Work is good for people, the research says so. And anyone that's had a long-term absence from work, whether it be work disability or unemployment, knows the negative impact on health and wellbeing of being out of workplaces on people. So the key to it is try and keep people at work as long as you can. Workplaces can be a risk factor and certainly these images come from a presentation that I did for the Western Australian Government on mental health strategies for fly-in, fly-out workers and I'll replace some of that material for you today. Really interesting that a Vice President after 30 years being around mining companies is an advocate for managing rosters, managing programs and putting in place support for people to work in remote communities, particularly those that are struggling on excessive shifts and shift roster patterns. Tell me if you've seen this research, it comes out of South Australia and Tasmania and it's done by Dollard and Bailey. And what it does is provide a different approach to managing risk around psychological injury. Any of you seen this research before? Okay, Bill's seen it. Six months ago or 12 months ago in Western Australia, I had 1,000 people in the room, three people in the room had seen it. And there is a lot of research that's been done in Tasmania and South Australia that can give you insight on how to manage this. Put your hand up if you're a OHS person or work health, safety person in the room. When we've got a risk, when we've got a problem, what do we grab? What's the tool we grab out of the toolkit? Hierarchy of control? Have you found that useful over the years in solving all sorts of, I certainly have in terms of solving physical related risk? When it comes to psychological risk, does the hierarchy of control help you? What's the first one of, what's the first step of the hierarchy of control? What's the top one? Eliminate. So what do we do? Stop working. It makes it hard, doesn't it? Robots. Yeah, so what we've found over the years is that the traditional hierarchy of control, which is always the tool that we go to, is the wrong tool. You've got, you need the right tool in the right toolbox. And Dollard and Bailey have come up with a different approach. And this is a different way of assessing risk, psychological risk in workplaces, either at an individual, at a team or an organisational wide level. And it deals with policies, implementation and responsibility, managerial support, job design and individual factors relating to each job. It's complicated, but it's manageable. So I'd encourage you to have a look at that, if you have an interest in this area, to have a look at that material. And at the back end of this presentation, I'm going to take you through five steps that I think are better practices in this area that can probably help you. Who's seen this material? It's best practice, international best practice from Canada. Have you ever seen any Canada research? Yep, we've got one hand go up. Who are our competitors in the mining industry? The Chinese and the Japanese have been doing this for many, many years, playing the ABC game, playing us off against Australia, Brazil and Canada. Guess what? If you go to those places and look at what they're doing in these areas, they're streets ahead in terms of world's best practice in managing psychological injury because they have remote working places. Where are the diamond mines in? In Canada, you know, Yellowknife and places where it's minus 28 degrees and no one lives there. Still, they've got four ice hockey rinks, but that's about all that is in Yellowknife. So they have similar issues, different geographies, different commodities, but they struggle with the same sorts of issues and Canada's made some progress. So I'd encourage you to pull the research that's on the bottom of this document when you get the presentation material and have a look, you may find it useful. I certainly did. What are concerns for fly-in, fly-out workers? Family-home separation, absent parents and absent partners. It's really hard to maintain a relationship when you're not there. And that's one of the big issues that happens at most kitchen tables for fly-in, fly-out workers. When there's a family crisis, they just can't be there and that creates a significant risk of relationship breakdown and isolation. And FIFOs consider themselves temporarily and are generally disliked by the locals. However, home is not somewhere they're often enough to carry out on with a real life. I spoke to a woman in Hobart when I was presenting a month ago and her son flies in and flies out from Burnie to the Pilbara, 28 days straight, came back for five days. She didn't actually recognise him when he came home and as fast as he unpacked, he was repacking to head back again. As we know, mining companies have shed workforce significantly around Australia over recent years and certainly as a Vice President of BHP, Bill, and I've seen many mine sites where organisations or decision-makers cut too deep and they cut too fast. And those that left or those that survived those round of retrenchments or terminations then really struggle with a massive workload to get the workload done and they don't feel that they have a choice. This research comes from a housing, House of Representatives Standing Committee in 2012 on fly-in, fly-out. Younger workers that go into these sorts of environments, they're unprepared for the fast lifestyle, the high disposable income, the macho culture as well as the high incidence of drug and alcohol use and high incidence of sexually transmitted diseases. So for some young people that are unprepared for the communities they go into, it's an absolute disaster for them. If we have a look at research that was done by Lifeline around fly-in, fly-out and drive-in, drive-out people, there are a number of, they, and this was through a population of a little over 900 people, the research has been repeated recently with the results the same. There were a number of people that committed suicide that could be related back to the fly-in, fly-out operations they were working with. Most newbie workers had little knowledge of the realities of FIFO work and they started to crumble as soon as they got there and unravel as the fatigue started to set in. And I think the big issue and it's the dollar signs out of the pocket, workers felt trapped. Everyone spends more than we earn. What do you think the average, if the average Australian earns a dollar, how much does the average Australian spend? We earn a dollar, how much do we spend? Give me a number. Bit more. Bit more than a dollar twenty? Bit more than a dollar fifty? We spend a dollar sixty-eight. So what research tells us is that for every dollar we earn, we spend a dollar sixty-eight. Now, when there's a threat of job loss, you can imagine how people react. Workers felt trapped, they were financially committed to their current earning capacity and felt they were unable to leave the fly-in, fly-out arrangements. Workers felt less, felt vulnerable to intensive scrutiny and the threat of job loss. And 1 in 10 workers reported not having access to an EAP and those that did have access to an EMP wouldn't use it. They were reluctant to use it because they thought it was a company resource that would work against them rather than work for them. And the, there was a significant number of fly-in, fly-out workers that reported using non-effective coping strategies, which is medication through substance misuse. There were a higher level divorce rate with lower wellbeing and higher stress, 81% of, and one key point to raise there, the more children they had, the worse the divorce rate was and the greater the risk with each additional child. 81% of workers were male and female workers were unaware of any female-focused support services at all. And when we looked, when we did this research, we didn't find any, which is quite alarming. Females were more likely to access formal supports, including EAPs and counsellors. And they felt that whereas mates will get together, blokes will get together and talk things through, women would not, particularly because of the gender issues and barriers that they saw in some of the workplaces, wouldn't seek support from their coworkers, particularly if they were male. And those that were 50 or more and had been doing this, they originally signed on to do, you know, get in, get some money and get out, but at 50 they were still doing it, they were less likely to have any formal support at all, they relied heavily on their mates. So workplaces, and sometimes the solution can be in the problem. I just mentioned that they relied heavily on their workmates, I'll revisit that shortly. But workplace can be a setting for intervention, so you can put in a number of programs, Workplace Chaplaincy, Are You OK?, Mental Health First Aid and I'll take you through those in some detail. What's needed is innovation, both at an individual, a team and an organisation-wide level. And you've got to focus on developing self, well, help-seeking behaviour. If you can encourage a person to seek help and support them as they seek help, guess what? They can stay at work. More importantly, we know and the evidence speaks for itself, once they start seeking help, they start to recover and they can live a productive and useful working life. Develop targets, supports for different at-risk groups. There are generational gaps that we now see in workplaces. When I look around this room, you guys are sort of mid-range age, but you'll have workers that are older than you and you'll have a lot of workers that are younger than you. And being able to bridge those gaps in terms of technology issues, implications, actions that benefit them is really different. One-size-fits-all doesn't work in this sort of environment. We'll talk about that a little later. Pre-employment services need to help people understand what to expect and how to cope. And certainly anything that reduces the stigma and addresses mental health literacy to overcome the suck-it-up culture is really important, particularly for the mining industry. I'll give you five steps, let's see how we go. Promote mental health literacy. Collaborate with all stakeholders. Who would think a past member of Western Mining and a Vice President of BHP would say actively collaborate with unions? I'm in Tasmania in a couple of weeks' time and I'm training union organisers because union organisers get hit with all sorts of problems around mental health issues and bluntly, they just don't know how to cope and they struggle themselves. And I'm coming back to train them in Hobart, to equip them to be able to take better care of themselves and take better care of their members as they head into the Christmas period, which is always a difficult time for workplace unions or anyone that's managing people or interrelating with people in these areas. You've got to co-design models that access health clinicians, academics and providers in the community in which you work. They're out there. Some of the best research that I see in this area comes from Tasmania, which is why I enjoy working with Tasmanians because you're willing to share, willing to collaborate and willing to have a go. You don't sit here waiting for the mainland or anyone else to solve a problem for you, you get in and give it a rip. And that's why I enjoy coming back here time after time. But you need to access those resources, you need to know where they are, you need to be able to provide links to them. And encourage all to take a broad view of the bottom line. It's a bit like the Pantene hair commercial. It doesn't happen overnight, but it does happen. If you invest in mental health first aid, if you invest in protecting workers, guess what? You get returns. And I'll show you a slide on that shortly. You've got to de-stigmatise policies and guidelines, so you've got to go through those, a bit of a fine-tooth comb. You've got to check on the resources that you've got in place and ensure they're doing a good job for you. So I tend to audit those to see whether they do what they say they're doing for people. And then you've got to try and create stay-at-work programs to assist those who remain at work while dealing with mental health concerns. If you can keep them at work, we know work is good for people. If you can get them through these difficult times, if they get the right treatment, guess what? They get better, they keep going. And more importantly, they become an advocate for these programs and they share their knowledge with their coworkers and encourage them, if they see them struggling, to seek help. Step three, de-stigmatise workplace training. You need to assess third-party providers, as I've suggested, to ensure they're delivering the services to an evidence-best way or evidence-best practice way that you want. You don't need underwater macrame making going on around your organisation or deliver little value to the individuals that are partaking in those programs and very little benefit to the teams that those people work with or the organisation generally. Create opportunities for training and mentoring to enhance people management skills for workers and peer-to-peer support workers. So what we found with the research that we did with fly-in, fly-out workers, they don't listen to the boss, they don't listen to their families, which regularly change, there could be two or three families over a working life in fly-in, fly-out work, that's where all the money goes, to lawyers around divorce proceedings. And it's interesting that, who do they listen to? They listen to their mates. So when we put in a program for some large mining multinationals, if they listen to their mates, train their mates on how to encourage them to seek help and provide care and provide support, emotional support while they access those clinical resources. And that's probably the most important issue when it comes to mining. Miners listen to other miners, train miners to help miners, train families, train people at the kitchen table to support those that could be struggling, whether it be a son, a daughter, or whether it be a neighbour, to care for one another. I'm not turning evangelical here, but I think the time for waiting for governments to solve these problems is long over. The mining communities in which you operate and certainly where I come from in Broken Hill, we'd care for each other, we'd find a way to care for one another, we'd find the knowledge, we'd find the resource, we'd make it happen as best we could amongst the communities in which we work. I think you guys really need to do the same and collaborate and share with one another. Mental health first aid training for all staff. I'm a mental health first aid instructor, so I take people through a range of issues, how to use a mental health first aid plan. Put your hand up if you're a first aider in the room. So if I, you know, mentioned that I had diabetes and was liable to slow down during this presentation, which is hard to imagine, you'd know what to do, wouldn't you? If I flaked it on the floor and looked like I had a cardiac arrest or a stroke, you'd know what to do. So what we do is we use a similar training program to train people on how to provide care for others around long-term depression, anxiety, psychosis, substance misuse or any mental health crisis they may face. So the mental health crisis that we train people in, similar to physical first aid, is what do you do if someone sounds suicidal? What do you do if someone's having a panic attack? What do you do if someone's having a psychosis attack or some form of substance misuse psychosis along those lines? So like a physical first aider, we train mental health first aiders in what to do and how to do it if someone's in need, whether it be an emergency situation or whether it be a chronic condition that they're battling with for some years. Does that make sense? It's not that hard and easily learned. We tend to use materials from Betty Kitchener, she's on the back of this book, I'll leave it here. One of you take it if you need it and if you need more, just let me know. It's written in grade seven English. I was born and raised in Broken Hill, as I mentioned. All of us know the literacy and learning issues that we, that mining towns struggle with. So what, when Betty kicked off this idea 16 years ago, I said, Betty, there's only one thing you need to do, let's make sure it's in grade seven English. Let's make sure there's no psycho mumbo jumbo nonsense in there. So people as physical first aiders, mental health first aiders can understand what to do and how to do it in simple, easy, easily understood terms. And that's what you produce. It's now been internationally renowned, we deliver the programs in 13 countries around the world, two and a half million people have been trained around the world and half a million people have been trained in Australia, which means other parts of the world are embracing this faster than what Australia is. The Are You OK? program, all of you would have heard of the Are You OK? program by now. When I used to wear this badge eight years ago, people would say, they'd come up to me in the street or come up to me in a plane and they'd say, what does R U O C stand for? What's R U O C all about? And back then, no one knew. But now there's 1 in 4 Australians that understand what the Are You OK? program's about and how it works. and how it encourages people to seek help and, more importantly, just have a conversation if someone's not quite right. In wrapping up the presentation, yes, one in four Australians now know what it means. We have a small paid, three-paid, part-time workers, small group of community ambassadors and also community outreach. And in seven, seven and a half, almost eight years, we've now got it to a stage where one in four Australians know what the program's about and celebrate it on a regular basis. It shouldn't only happen on one day, it should happen any day, that you see someone that's not tracking right or you feel need support and care. The other thing that we do, particularly for isolated communities, is we have a digital online community. And you would have noticed on the first of November, I work in rural Australia as well, any of the at-risk communities around Australia. And the image that we were trying to dispel was the image of a farmer with a rifle sitting in a ute at two o'clock in the morning and making the wrong decision. What digital online technology has now provided us with is an ability to connect people wherever they are, whenever they need access to these resources, pretty much straight away, and be able to source apps, chat lines, chat groups or dedicated professionals, clinicians, both psychiatrists and psychologists. So people can get the resources where they need them, when they need them, which has always been a big issue for providing this sort of response for communities that are isolated, particularly mining communities or rural communities. So we have it all. What we do is we put together a strategy group or a task group that identify what are the areas that they need support in, in their communities or their organisations around physical wellbeing, psychological wellbeing and financial wellbeing. And then what we do is we stream that information through into those three buckets of knowledge. And when people need it, if they're at their kitchen table and they need financial knowledge, they pick up their iPhone and they click on a button and the information comes forward to them. So they know where to go, what to do and how to manage. Because these are the things that none of us were taught in school. We weren't taught how to care for our psychological wellbeing, our physical wellbeing, or even our financial wellbeing. And it's only when a crisis hits a kitchen table that then we start scampering and go looking for that information double quick. So that information now gets streamed through to people twenty-four-seven. If they need a counsellor, if they need a support, they get instant response that gets them through the night and then it has an appointment waiting for them the following day. And the information can be over the internet through, we have a protected hub, so it's private and encrypted rather than just Skype. But it looks like Skype, but it's more encrypted and safer. So then councillor and injured person can talk freely. That's how easy it is. We have targeted campaigns for at-risk groups. So we also look to those groups that are struggling, where they don't have the resources, they don't have access to information, or at times, sometimes they can have access to too much information. So the groups we work with are emergency services, rural farming communities, aquaculture, forestry, anywhere where there's lone and isolated workers or remote communities and try and bring information to people in ways that they can understand as quickly and as readily available as they need. In wrapping up, promote psychologically safe culture. Work to eliminate the stigmatisation of mental health issues. That means tackling the prevailing culture. It never goes away and as soon as someone's struggling, people around them can act poorly. You need to intervene and provide the support that people need to get them through. Incorporate best practices for primary, secondary and tertiary prevention for mental health issues. So all the way through to hospital care, if it's needed, it's available and can be organised. And create a culture that's a safe workplace. Why do it? PricewaterhouseCoopers came out with a set of information, for every dollar you invest, you get $2.30 in return. Now, we've seen it with these physical warm-up programs. We need to do the same with mental health programs moving forward. In summary, what are the key issues? Implement training that builds self-awareness and develops psychological resilience. Develop supports that increase self or help-seeking behaviour. Develop targeted supports for different at-risk groups, so you actually hit people with what they need when they need it, as opposed to thinking you know best, which means a little bit of engagement to understand what works best for a twenty-year-old to a forty-year-old to a fifty or a sixty-year-old. And develop ongoing workplace support services that reduce stigma and address mental health literacy issues. What have I learnt in doing this for thirty years? Workers are afraid to reach out for help, yet the majority of mental illnesses can be treated, allowing people to recover and remain productive at work. And finally, most people are frightened or afraid to raise mental health issues and most feel they can't because people like us won't be supportive or can't help. You wouldn't be in this room if you weren't caring people. And hopefully, some of the issues that I've covered today, which are very much at a high level, give you a framework to then take some of these issues back into your workplace and deliver improved services that will bring benefit to people. And in leaving you, if you're concerned with anyone, don't walk past them. Don't choose to look the other way. Just ask them, are they okay? And do what you can to help and support them and reach out and find the resources that you need. Thank you. Have we got time for a question or two?
Yes.
Any questions? I covered a lot. It sounds big business, but as I said, you can apply those same sort of methods in half a dozen plumbers working in a suburb or even a hairdresser shop, which I've done over recent years.
Steve, what's the degree of collaboration between providers? I'm aware of one guy who I'm particularly impressed with, and that's fellow one and one, Swat, who was both a North Melbourne and Sydney supporter.
Footballer.
And he's been in the closet for some years and he's come out and he's involved with a group called Pucker Up. Is there a coordination between those providers in this place, Steve?
Some of them tend to want to go their own way. And, you know, people being people, you know, mine's always bigger than yours and I can't imagine there'd be any of those behaviours with psychologists and psychiatrists or other, you know, well wishes around programs. So what we do is we don't try and impose the program on people. So we have a service delivery model and a method. So what we do is we bring together the best that serve the community in which we work. So with rural communities, I point to RAW Tasmania. Do you know about RAW Tasmania? Rural Alive and Well, one of the better programs that highlights collaboration. And what we do is then take that information to people. We only ever work with people that collaborate together. And if someone has an existing program, I work with McKellup Family Services that specialise in trauma and family support and family care. And that would be a program that we encourage people to look. So we look at what are the issues? What are the problems you're trying to solve? Where are the best-practice leaders in that community? And we approach them. And we ask them to host their information, provide their resources available. And what that does is build collaboration. So we use Beyond Blue, we use mental health first aid, we use the RUOK program, we use whatever works for people. If people find it useful and they're going to use it, it's going to be in there.
I think a number of people were at the Emma Foreman's store about a month ago. I met John Park from RAW.
Oh, yes.
He was extremely impressive, great advocate for it.
Yeah, and, you know, John's battled his own demons and been able to come through the other side. And John and I co-presented in Lonnie a few months back and an outstanding contributor to what he's doing and the RAW program in itself. But they all struggle with government funding, they all struggle with all those sorts of issues. What we do is provide a platform that can actually take that information to people from their perspective, cost-effectively, and encourage that message. But rather than impose a solution, we look at what works for a particular industry, a particular group. If there's things that are working in that industry, well, they get plugged in straight away. Thanks, Bill. Any last questions? Well, thanks, everyone. Enjoy steamy Queenstown and look forward to catching up as work takes me around this state in coming months. Take care of everyone.
Thanks, Stephen. Before our next speaker, we have a signature activity for Better Work Taz sessions and that between speakers, we actually encourage everybody to get up off their chairs. And if you would like just to discuss with the person near to you, whoever you want to talk to, just one thing that you learnt from that session. And in the meantime, we'll be setting up for the next speaker. Just gives you an opportunity to stand up, move and stretch. Our next speaker is Jimmy Thompson from Jona Group. Jimmy has thirty years international experience with blue-chip organisations such as Rio Tinto, St George Bank, Lloyds Banking Group. Jimmy has consulted and facilitated and coached across the UK, also the USA, China, Mongolia, Singapore and France, as well as Australia. So lots of experience there. And since joining the Jona Group in 2014, he's successfully managed and delivered safety culture transformational programs within industries such as energy, mining, construction and manufacturing. So I'll welcome Jimmy and his presentation title is called Limbic Risk.
Thanks, Paula. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
What about the accent? Do you understand it?
Yeah.
Excellent, thank you. Appreciate that feedback. Okay, I've been in Australia now for about fifteen years, but prior to that, I'm a boy from Glasgow. And that probably leads to the question around, what does a boy from Glasgow know about the brain? You know, really what we do with our head is use it as a bit of a weapon. And we had that guy in the English cricket team that tried to do that, but he didn't do it very well because the guy was still standing afterwards. But from our point of view, we use it as a bit of an affectionate welcome in Glasgow, the old headbutt. So what does a guy from Glasgow know about the brain and what goes on in the head? Hopefully today, in a short time, I can share with you a couple of little insights which may actually help you to understand a little bit about what the hell was someone thinking when they did something. So I'm sure you've all been in a situation where you've looked at someone from afar and went, oh, what the hell were they thinking? Or substitute that expletive for whatever you normally would use. But what the hell was that person thinking? Someone who's experienced, knowledgeable, trained, has all the procedures, the equipment, you know, knows everything that they're meant to be doing, almost like an exemplary record in terms of doing stuff. And just for some reason, they have that moment where they go, what the hell was that person thinking? We want to give you an insight into what goes on in the brain around that, why people do what we do. And at the end of the day, we're all human. We all make mistakes. And we all have a little voice in our head that continually chats away to us as well. So first question, who makes mistakes? Hands up if you make a mistake.
Yeah.
Excellent. All right. Beautiful. Hands up if you think you've got a voice in your head.
Yeah.
Okay, only some of you are saying that. What's actually gone on there is that for everyone that didn't, the voice in your head is saying, don't put your hand up right now.
Yeah.
That's just what it's saying to you, right? So we want to look a little bit at this subject called limbic risk. And limbic is part of the brain. The brain is made up of a whole series of different regions. It's a very complex organ that we have and it does everything for us, obviously, but we want to know a little bit more about that and this particular area or concept called limbic risk, which has started to become more and more apparent that this is a key area for us to make a breakthrough in terms of safety performance. So let's have a look at that. The four things I will look to cover with you in this short period of time, and I'm looking to cram about a day's content into about forty minutes. So forgive me if I move along rather quickly on this sort of stuff, but I'm available at the end. If there's any questions you want to chat afterwards, happy to do that. So we're going to look at our brain and safety. We're going to look at this limbic risk concept in a little bit more detail and how it comes around. We're going to give you an opportunity to know your crux. So we'll give you a bit more insight into what that is all about in a moment. We're going to share some examples with you in a couple of videos. And from that, you'll understand a little bit more about what I'm asking there. And then the last thing as well, okay, that's great, but what do we do with all of that? And one of the things that we pride ourselves on is that we look at, how do we practically apply this back into the workplace? So we don't want it to be a whole load of theoretical stuff that, you know, that someone presents to you and you go away and say, well, that was okay, you know, maybe I learned something, but what do I do with it? What we want to actually do today is give you something you can go, right, great, and I can actually apply this in some way when I go back. So that's the plan. That's what I'm trying to get out of this. So the first thing I want to do is look at our brain and safety. And there's an area of the brain called limbic and there's also an area called the prefrontal cortex. And this is the stuff that we want to really look at as we go through. The three parts of the brain that we want to touch on is, first of all, what we call the basal ganglia. Basal ganglia is actually just an automatic part of the brain. It actually sits within the limbic section of your brain and it deals with all the habits and instincts and all the stuff that we just do without even thinking. So almost when we go into autopilot, we are operating from this section of the brain. Yeah? Any brain surgeons in the room? Just so that I can check.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Safe. Second part of the brain I want to talk about is the limbic system. And the limbic system is dealing with your emotional section of yourself. So it actually provides all the emotions and feelings that come through for you. It does reactions, it does fight and flight. So, you know, if anything goes on, then, you know, you'll actually feel that and it happens without you even thinking. Last night I was having dinner, I came down here for dinner and I was actually sitting right over in that very corner there, just having a quiet little bit of dinner. I don't know if anyone was in the room.
Yeah.
The wasp, yes, it was you that laughed at me at the time, that's right. So I was sitting over there, having my dinner, just finishing off and I had a nice little bottle of light beer there and there was only a little bit left in it, fortunately. But I'd noticed this wasp flying up and down and I'm not a great fan of that kind of stuff. And it was flying up and down and I'm thinking to myself and the voice in my head's going and it's saying, you know, as long as you stay away from me, I'll stay away from you, mate. And it flew up to the top and I said, great, you know. So I started to get my stuff together. I thought, I'll take my last drink of beer. As I was about to take my last drink of beer, the wasp decided to fly back down and it right onto my arm and I went, oh shit, you know, and dropped the beer and Mark started laughing at me. And I had to very quickly explain that, oh, it was because of the wasp, it wasn't anything else, but you were still laughing. He thought it was quite funny. This happens all instinct. It doesn't, it's not like the wasp came down, lands on your arm and you go, oh, look, okay, there's the wasp, what should I do? You know, it just happens, right? If you walk out in front of a car, you're not going to analyse that and go, well, that's interesting. What should I do there? You know, your brain is not going to think about this, it's just going to move, right? So when we look at the limbic brain and the limbic system within the brain, this is what it's charged to do. It gives you the emotions and the feelings and a reaction right away. Yeah? And the third part of the brain, and I've just mentioned this briefly, is the prefrontal cortex. And that's a membrane that covers all of the brain. But predominantly at the front of the brain, you've got this prefrontal cortex or PFC, as we've shortened it to, which really deals with the logical part of your brain, the rational decision-making and thinking and the problem-solving that you go through. And it's the only part of the brain that's actually evolved from animals. So we've evolved from, obviously, animals and monkeys and so on, but the part of the brain that's evolved to, you know, to make us who we are is actually the prefrontal cortex. So we can actually solve problems, make rational decisions and evolve. Whereas, you know, if you don't have that, then you're operating from what we call limbic all the time, which is just emotional stuff that's going on around you. So it gives you a little bit of an insight into the brain. And it's important that we remember a couple of these. Prefrontal cortex, logical, rational decision-making, limbic system, emotional reactions, feelings, so on. Yeah? One, we can do in a very controlled way, one is a very uncontrolled thing. Yeah? It just happens. All right. Let's have a look at this little guy. This is a very short fifteen-second video clip. Blink and you will miss it. But I want you to look at this guy as he goes through his workplace. There is no audio for this one. It's just silent from a closed-circuit television that they had in the workshop. So I'll play this and then we can have a quick chat about what this is all about. All right. And you can see him putting his hands in his pockets and skipping away, hoping no one saw it, just like I hope no one saw the wasp incident last night. But there you go, there's always someone. So this one happened to be caught on camera. So what do you think he was thinking?
He wasn't.
He wasn't really, was he? So he was going on automatic, right? He actually saw the barrier tape, because if he didn't see the barrier tape, he would have walked through it. He actually saw it and went under. Okay? So there was a moment where he recognised it, but he didn't recognise anything beyond that that looked out of ordinary, you know, just looked like standard stuff, someone's put a bit of tape up, maybe they're going to do work later on. Didn't really notice the pile of dirt and didn't notice that the hole had filled through with water. And it's because our brain is just not registering that. Okay? It's just not seeing it. Everything looks normal, so why would I spend any energy looking for stuff that's not normal? So it just goes through autopilot experience. He goes under the barrier and finds himself in the drink. Now, the reason we go under the barrier is because we like to take shortcuts. We are actually hardwired to find easier ways to do things. Makes sense? That's why we call it a shortcut, right? Because it's quicker to get somewhere or do something or be somewhere. So these shortcuts happen in us and, you know, we're just naturally looking for them because wherever we can, we don't want to waste energy. Why would I walk all the way around there when I can go here, straight through? And it's our brain that's telling us and the little voice in our head is going, yeah, just go under. There's nothing wrong, just go, you'll be fine. And there, that's what happens. So these things happen all the time. And even if you're very, you know, very much doing a lot of work around safety, for example, and training people and giving them all procedures and processes and rules and training around how to use equipment and so on, things still happen. So we've got to try and understand a little bit more about that because that can help us to make the breakthrough. All right, we'll leave Mr Barrier Tape along. There's three things that, for example, we do and they're just human nature for us. One of them, speeding. Okay? Hands up if you speed. They can see you, they can just see me, right? Sometimes we speed, right? Sometimes we do it unintentionally. Sometimes we might do it intentionally, depending on what the reward is for us. If we're running late and we want to get somewhere really quickly and we want to be on time because it's not looking good if we're not, then we might just go a little bit quicker because we're okay, we're skilled and we know what we're doing. Or we might do it unintentionally. So something funny is happening on the radio or something's going on and you just, you start to drift off and your automatic brain goes on and you look down at the speedo and you go, oh shit, I'm going 15 over what I meant to. It just happens sometimes, yeah? So speeding, it kicks in a lot, you know, in the car. Fatigue is another one and, you know, Stephen talked about drive-in, drive-out. And it's great examples that I got from my time in Rio around that sort of stuff. With drive-in, drive-out people, maybe driving four or five hours after a long shift to get back to where they've got to get to. And they talked about fighting fatigue. You know, anyone, you know, when you're driving, you ever felt fatigued? It's a horrible feeling, isn't it? You start to get that, that feeling of, oh, jeez, this is really bad. And you just try and fight it. So a lot of us try and fight it and we'll wind the window down, turn the aircon up, blow it in our face, take some water, radio, any, anything to try and get ourselves to waken up a little bit. Some of the drive-in, drive-out guys talked about how they do things like elastic band around their wrist and they just twang it. Twang, twang, twang. Someone else talked about how they pulled the nose hairs out. And that really woke them up for a while, yeah? But it's only temporary, right? Fatigue actually kicks in because what the brain is doing is saying, you're feeling tired, right? It's probably best that you, you know, pull up somewhere here. That's the logical part of your brain talking to you. But then the emotional part kicks in and saying, well, if you do that, then you're going to lose time. And you need to be somewhere or it's good if you get there a little bit early. So why would you waste 20 minutes, half an hour right now pulling up? So this has a debate. Your voice has a debate with itself in your head because there's two parts of your brain talking to each other. Yeah? And so we fight it. The thing with fatigue is that anyone that's ever had, you know, like the second wind? When you're in the car and you feel as if you've worked through the fatigue and you've came out the other end of it and you've thought, oh, I'm feeling great now. Hey, that worked, you know, the aircon worked, the radio worked, whatever it was you did, worked. It actually isn't second wind. What it is now is your brain has shut down from sending you any more signals about the fact you're fatigued. So it's just not going to send you any more signals. What happens next? Well, it's like a laptop where your battery's almost run dead. Gives you the little flash at 10%, saying, hi, you're in trouble here, you've got to switch to power or switch it off. You ignore that, it just shuts down. And that's why people go off the road, right? Because they think that they beat it and then bang, they're off. Yeah? So fatigue is a really important part of that and it's one that we fight all the time. And mobile phones, you know, we're really connected these days. And there's more and more research out there to show that mobile phones is the equivalent of driving drunk. Yeah? So we know that this is out there, but yet we feel a pressure to stay connected, to respond to a call, to maybe even do an email or a text message back. But knowing that potentially that could be something that will go wrong for us. But we think it won't happen to us. It happens to other people because they are not very good drivers and we are. Yeah? If I did a quick straw poll around the room and asked you, out of 10, how would you rate your driving? Most of us, I would guess would rate around about a seven or an eight. They would rate themselves. Very few people rate themselves as a two, right? We all think we're great, right? But there's people out there having accidents all the time. Not the same person, but different people, yeah? All right, so mobile phones is another one. So when we talked about the prefrontal cortex, I talked about energy that was being used. If you think about the prefrontal cortex as a battery and you, when you go to sleep, you're charging your battery up, you wake up in the morning, hopefully you're feeling reasonably refreshed, ready for your day and you go out there and you solve problems and you fix the world in whatever you do, right? What you're actually doing during that day is using up the battery. Now, if you have a really, really hard day where you're doing lots of problem solving, lots of logical, rational thinking, then what actually happens over time and how much you use your PFC is that the battery starts to drain down. Does that make sense? Yeah? So this is why at the end of the day, even if you haven't been doing any manual labour and you say to someone, I'm tired, and they look at you go, how can you be tired? It's not as if you've been digging holes all day. It's because it's actually the PFC, your prefrontal cortex has now got really, really tired. It uses up a lot of energy to do what it does. And therefore you start to pinch the nose, maybe rub the temples. You know, you start to sort of blink because you're trying to get more juice out of the, of the battery. Right? But there is only so much you can do. The more you use the battery, the more you use your PFC and it drains down, guess what part of the brain more likely to kick in? The limbic part, right? The limbic part we don't have control over. Yeah? So we want to look at this. When we think about rational thinking and decision-making, it's limited. We can only do it for so long and then it just gets very tiring for us. So what we've got to do is understand a little bit about when that happens and what do we do about it? When it comes to safety, what this means is that there are procedures, our risk assessments, all the tools that you have in place to deal with stuff are all based on someone who's been working through this logically and rationally. It doesn't really deal with someone who's irrational in that moment, who's emotional, who is this or that. They are actually dealing with very logical processes. Step one, do this, step two, do this. But the very same steps that they put out could be the ones that really frustrate someone. Yeah? So anyone who gets frustrated by additional procedures will know what I mean there. So what we've got to do is think about this and look at, well, where does limbic risk fit into this? Because limbic risk is one of the biggest things that we should be looking at. And Stephen, during his presentation, talked about, you know, how people are feeling. And the limbic risk actually plays a lot into that. And if we're exposed for a long period of time, it really does have an impact on us. So let's look at limbic risk. There are what we call five states of being that actually influence limbic risk and expose us to limbic risk. And those five are distraction, pressure or stress, whatever you want to call it, fatigue, distraction, irritation, I've distracted, I said it twice, and complacency. So there are five key areas that when they are present in you, that you're more likely to go into what we call limbic risk. And what we also know is that if you are fatigued and if the energy levels are low in your brain, then you're more likely to rely on limbic risk. You might not want to do that, but that's what's controlling you at that moment in time. The limbic system is quicker than the prefrontal cortex. Okay? So the prefrontal cortex is your logical, rational decision-making and it processes at a speed. Now, I'm only talking like millisecond, you know, I'm not talking like seconds or minutes here. But the limbic system goes quicker because it is to deal with responses and to get you out of trouble and to create emotion in you very quickly. And it overrides the PFC. So when you're in situations and, you know, something happens, your limbic kicks in first and then your prefrontal cortex kicks in after. If your prefrontal cortex is low in energy, guess what? You'll be in limbic for a lot longer. When we're in limbic system, we make mistakes. Yeah? So let's look at someone who, you know, made a mistake at work. So this is from a zoo in New South Wales, at Nowra. And it happened about three years ago, three and a half years ago now. And I want to show you this clip. And then we can actually have a little think about, well, where was this guy? What was he doing and what was he, where was he thinking from? Was he thinking from limbic or PFC? So here we go.
Seven News has obtained astonishing amateur video showing the moment a handler was bitten by a 3.7 metre crocodile. 31-year-old Trent Burton just managed to tear himself loose but suffered a badly mauled hand. We warn, while the video is not bloody, it's pretty confronting.
All right, you ready? He's big when he comes out of the water, isn't he?
Yes!
Feeding time at Shoalhaven Zoo, but Johnny the Croc is hard to please.
You coming? Come on, come on.
Handler Trent Burton offers the 3.7 metre saltier juicy steak.
Don't go back in the pond, I can see you thinking. He's going to turn around.
Then this. The croc latches on to Trent's left hand, won't let go and with incredible strength drags him away. Visitors scream as John slams Trent into his fence.
Help! Oh my god!
Now, it's a fight for life, man versus beast. Then Trent breaks free and jumps out.
Everyone calm down.
Okay, I've got a first.
His left hand is mangled, three to four tooth punctures, a 10-centimetre gash in his palm and a busted knuckle on his right.
I don't think he actually intentionally went for my hand. I tapped the meat in his jaws. Sneaky bugger grabbed it.
Seeing that video, Trent admits it was a bad mistake to reach for that meat.
A very dumb, small brain fart on my part. Seems more dumb when you watch it from out of here. I don't, that's it, I just look at that and just go, rookie.
All right. So he actually describes it as a bit of a brain fart, which I quite like that term because that's essentially what it was. What he was doing was something that every one of us looks at and goes, jeez, that's a bit risky. Yeah? But he's done it that many times that he no longer thinks about it as being risky. He actually thinks that he knows what Johnny the Croc is actually thinking. Because he actually says at one point, don't go back in the pond, I can see you thinking. Yeah? It's a crocodile, all right? But he's just so now, just complacent around that as being a risk. What was his key objective? Put on a show, yeah, put on a show. So he was there to put on a show for the people that were watching. And so he was putting himself under pressure, yeah? He was getting a little bit distracted because he wouldn't take it, a little bit irritated, but he was just trying to keep himself together. And of course, then that happened. So this was someone who probably wasn't thinking logically at that point in time as he put his hand out to say, well, the bit of meat's not properly in your draw. I'm just going to take it back out and put it in again. That's not going to happen, yeah? And especially when the croc's looking going, there's a bigger bit of meat. Why would I want this when I can have that? Yeah? So he starts dragging him away. Now, at that point initially, you know, he was in limbic, massively in limbic, yeah? This is survival stuff for him now. He's going, oh shit, you know, I'm getting pulled away here. And you can see him getting pulled into the fence. When he get pulled into the fence, believe it or not, that was the moment where I think he realised, I'm in real trouble here, I'm not getting out of this. And I don't know where it came from for him and I haven't spoken to the guy, so I don't know for sure. But I suspect what's happened is that he's, he's actually went to his prefrontal cortex because what he did saved his life. I don't know if you noticed in the video, but he actually jumped in. So he actually made this decision, he didn't get dragged in, it wasn't, he actually made the decision to go and jump over the crocodile. And as he would jumped over the crocodile, that took the croc by surprise, just enough to loosen and he managed to get out. Amazing, yeah? But so lucky he actually did that. But why did that happen? Well, you know, there were so many different things that occurred to get him to a point where he was in the limbic state. He was not thinking. He wasn't, he wasn't thinking clearly. So we built a simple model, which I think, you know, when you look at this in your workplace, you could potentially apply this into what you're doing. We know that in whatever task you've got to do at work, and some of them are more risky than others, but there is a level of risk involved. Yeah? So we know that's a known risk and that's the risk before risk management. And as we've already heard this morning, what we then do is apply some risk management procedures to that. You know, the hierarchy of controls, for example. So we do all of this work to reduce the risk down to as low as reasonably practicable. Yeah, that's, that's what we get down to as an acceptable level of risk at this, at this moment to do that job. Short of not doing it at all, this is, this is as low as we can get it. Okay? That makes sense? Yeah? And then what happens is we add something into the mix, which is people. And what we know about people is that, you know, there's limbic risk. It's unpredictable, uncontrollable, we just don't know what's going to happen there. Different people do different things at different times for different reasons. If people are pressured, fatigued or distracted or irritated or complacent, then they may actually undo some of the fantastic risk management work that's been done. And so much more that we just don't know what's going to happen as a result. And that's where we've added in what we call the limbic risk. Hopefully that makes sense for you as a very simple diagram to get you to the point of understanding how dangerous this can actually be for us. Once we start to understand that and then we can say, right, okay, what are the triggers that actually make this occur and what can we do about it? Then you're on the road to reducing limbic risk in your organisation. So we all go into limbic. And we all do it at various times during the day. I want you to think about when you've been in limbic in recent times. And it could be something really obvious. Limbic can show up anywhere. So it can show up at work, it can show up in the car, it can show up at home. I know sometimes if I'm having an argument with my wife and I say something like, you know, it comes out of the mouth, but you know that the brain's actually going to you, don't, you know, don't say that because that's not a good idea. That's not going to get you, you know, a good outcome. But the other part of your brain is going, but it's going to feel bloody good right now and you've just got to get it off your chest. So bang, and then as soon as it's out there, you can't take it back. It's gone, right? And then you're dealing with it. Why did I say that? What was I thinking? Yeah? So we all go there, we all have limbic, it's part of our life. It's just who we are as human beings. So I want you to think about the last time you were in limbic, whether it be at work, whether it be at home, whatever it would be. What was it you did? Maybe what was causing it? And what results did you get from it? Yeah? So have a, have a look around, speak to two or three people around you. Just very quickly share when you were last in limbic and what actually happened as a result. Not something to be proud of, but it's something we are, okay? So you've got one minute to do that. All right. It, it sounds like there are plenty of stories out there, yeah? Okay, we've all got examples of when this actually happens to us. I'm not going to get you to share them, but we've all got them. We all know when it, when it occurs and what happens. Now, there is a whole process that, as I say, it takes, you know, it takes a few hours, but you can actually unpack all of this and really understand a little bit more about what drives it. And a lot of it is around things like beliefs that we hold and also things like mindset that we have. So what mindset are we in at that moment in time? And all of that coupled in then drives what you think in any particular situation. And what you think drives how you feel. And how you feel drives how I behave. And how I behave drives your results. So there's a process you can go through to understand a little bit about that and interrupt that pattern as high up as you can, almost getting to beliefs and mindset levels. Almost getting to beliefs and mindset levels. If I can change up there, I can actually have a different set of results to what I've always had. Yeah, so it's that moment where you can start to cause a breakthrough. And the difference in people when they understand that is just incredible. I can't do that today with the short time, but again, you know, there are some tools and processes that we can share with you. Getting back to this, this is why now what we're looking at is, well, what are the crocs in your business? So what are the things that can come and bite you? Or bite you in your organisation? So what are the big ticket items that really are there? And also, you know, what is, you know, is there distraction present in your organisation? So, you know, for some of you, maybe your organisation is distracted by factors that are going on, yeah? Other people, it might be there's a stress level in their organisation. I spoke to some of you this morning, you know, "How's work?" "Oh, it's really busy." Yeah, great, you know, but there's a stress involved in that as well, yeah? Certain level of pressure. Fatigue, is your organisation fatigued? Seems a bit strange, doesn't it, to say, you know, like it can be fatigued? But, you know, your organisation is the sum total of the people that work in it. So is your organisation feeling fatigued? Maybe they're irritated. Maybe there's a level of irritation around like that. Sometimes that happens, depending on what's actually going on in the business, you might have an irritation level that exists in your organisation. Or it could be a complacent level. How can an organisation be complacent, special around safety? Well, we've not had an incident for five years. You know, alarm bells should be going off more than ever. And I'm sure for most of you that is the case, but you know, your workforce get to believe their own hype. And when you start to believe your own hype around it, that's when all this starts to occur and you're only ever one mistake away from something big, from a croc, yeah? Or whatever your croc is. So again, just turn them to the person next to you. Do you have some crocs in your business? You've managed to reduce risk down to as low as reasonably practicable, right? So you've risk managed down, so that's now what we call residual risk. But now there are Limbic risks kicking in. So what are the crocs? What are the things that potentially could come back and bite you in your organisation, based on the fact that you might have distraction stress, so on and so forth? And again, I'm just gonna give you a minute, just turn to someone next to you, have a chat. All right. So I apologise for jumping in again mid-conversation, but again, you know, just wanna keep moving along because I realise that your time is valuable to you. But it gets you thinking now a little bit more about this. The one other thing I'll leave you with in this particular area is we've spoken about these in isolation. What if you've got distraction in your business, or what have you got fatigue in your organisation? What if you've got a combination of these things? All right? People are fatigued, they're distracted, right? Maybe they've been complacent, nothing's happened for a while. You can start to see a picture getting painted. And the more that you can get in front of that, then the better equipped you are to actually deal with it. And it will involve awareness. You know, it's one of the key things that you can actually create in your business, it's more about the awareness part of it and the beliefs around that. So moving into the what now. There is no silver bullets to this, there's no sort of magic recipe that I'm gonna give you today, but there are a series of things I've got you to think about, or I want you to think about leaving here, and potentially you can start to actually do or get some support to do. If you're in the senior leader or operational leadership role of some kind, then there are some things that you should consider doing. Storytelling, and not just storytelling, but heartfelt storytelling. So really sharing your why for safety is really incredibly powerful as a tool. And there is an actual formula for success around really good storytellers, because there are some good storytellers out there and there are some absolute crap ones, you know? And a story is one that obviously should be a true story, not one that you just make up on the spot either, yeah? But there are ways of doing the story in a very effective manner to achieve the outcome that you want, which is to create that feeling in someone that they were actually there when it happened. And if you can create that feeling for them, that experience for them, that will lock into them a lot more than just maybe giving them a new procedure or a new rule, yeah? Absolutely. Yeah, yeah, absolutely. And so this formula for success around it will make sure that that happens, because if you don't have a point, yeah, what is the point, yeah? All right. Care conversations, you'll call them what you want, but we, you know, we talk about care as an acronym. But it's about having your safety conversations with people. And where are they coming from when they have that conversation? Are they coming from a reactive, rule-based, compliant-based approach? Or are they coming more from a proactive care perspective in terms of the conversations? And when are they having the conversations and who with? So there's a whole range of stuff around that. Self-reflection, what are you causing? So if you're in Limbic, guess what? The people around you start to be impacted by that. So what are we causing out there in our business? Because we're actually very influential, even if we don't think we are, we are very influential. And the more that we are showing up in a different way, then that actually impacts the people around. So how are we showing up? What do we do around that? And there's some self-reflection you can do there. Being aware of complacency, because that's probably the biggest risk that you face, of course. And then looking at Limbic risk and incorporating that into your risk assessment tools. So not only just starting off with, well, what's the job that you got and what can happen? Maybe something around, well, how are we feeling right now? You know? What are we feeling? Because that actually impacts our capacity to carry out that task in a logical manner, yeah? So that's the first thing you can do. The second thing is for the workforce, they can recognise when they're in Limbic and they can start to actually do things to control that themselves. And there's some really good techniques around that. You can stimulate a culture of intervention where intervention is not seen as being pulling someone up. It's not seen about the rules, but it's actually seen about something, "Hey, I just don't want you to get hurt." That's my key aim here. Understanding the power of mindset and beliefs, because once we understand that, we can actually make breakthroughs and results that we previously didn't think possible. Now, anyone that's writing this down, that will be, and that will be provided, we'll give you that information, okay? But this is important in terms of what can be done. I talked a lot about stress, so I just wanna show you this very quick graph around it that might just help you, because we've got performance and we've got stress levels in an organisation. What we actually know is when people are distressed, okay? What happens is they are in an emotional and irrational state when you're in distress, yeah? And that generally comes from pressure, distraction, irritation and fatigue. So when you have that in your organisation, people are distressed, and when they're distressed, they are actually going into Limbic mode. But they're going into Limbic mode in a very irrational, emotional way. Then you've got the other side, and this is called eustress. So eustress, you know, I suppose to use normal terms, is almost like boredom, right? It's when there's not enough work to do. So people slacking off a little bit, we get a quiet period, oh, great. But if that quiet period goes on and on and on, people actually get bored. And we go into what we call eustress. And eustress is habitual autopilot stuff, okay? And that comes from complacency. And so for you guys as leaders in your organisation, and you probably realise this, you've got to actually create a level of stress. But you've got to have that balance. If you go too far for too long, you'll cause distress. If you slacken off for too long the other way, you'll cause eustress. Stress is healthy, but it's gotta be healthy in the right levels, yeah? So when we know that, we can get people thinking emotionally and rationally, and guess what? We get peak performance. Peak performance in terms of what we produce and peak performance in terms of safety and how we go about it. So this is just a little bit of a graphical representation of, you guys will want to look for the sweet spot. The sweet spot is creating enough stress but not too much, and not exposing people for too long to the dangers of that. Two glimpses into the future that we're just working on right now that I wanna share with you, and then that'll be me finished off. And this is other things that you can do to get in front of people and engage them. One of them we're gonna look at is online modules that you can actually run around safety leadership, but not the typical safety stuff, but the more around the stuff that I've just been talking to you about. And the other one is more about a gamification type or simulation type approach that you can actually do to engage people, rather than organising that they have to be in a room on a certain day and a certain time and the costs associated to that. So the first one is just around safety leadership online, and we've developed a series of modules which actually can help people to work through that, either at leadership level or at workforce level. And some of these apply to different groups or to all of them. So understanding around ourselves as a leader or the brain at risk or intervention, there are some very simple one-hour modules that can be taken around that. So for example, understanding self as a leader, you can actually go into things like, how does the brain behave and what does it drive? You can look at things like the power of belief. Anyone that's seen one of my presentations below, sometimes I use things like sport and things like the hacker, because that really shares a kind of belief in how that drives a passion in the right way. Mindset, what mindset do we use? And they then get tools around actually a mirror and writing stuff on a mirror. So there's some interesting stuff around that you can play around with. Intervention is another one. So what is it? How would it look? What goes wrong? And how can I practise that? So there's some things there that you can play around with. And there are five modules there, which is just broken down a little bit. So again, that's in the pack that you'll probably see at some point. But some interesting things and a very simple way to do it. So, you know, if you guys are maybe hit by heavy rain and you can't do anything, then you can get people onto digital platforms and start to do some of this stuff when it suits you. So that's one thing that you can do. The other thing which is really interesting is this what we call gamification. Now, I'm only taking this from a risk assessment point of view, but you can actually see the potential in this. So I'm gonna show you a very short clip, this goes for about 90 seconds. And this is a very simple example of what you can actually do. You can imagine people playing this on their device or whatever, not while they're working, right? That's distraction. But, you know, actually at a moment in time when it suits. So this is just an example of how you can recreate a workspace. The person that's running the game operates it, comes up, sees a couple of examples of things that are going on, decides to approach this one, and has a look at it from a risk assessment point of view. So if you wanted to do risk assessment training, for example, great, you know? And then what happens is it goes through and allows the person to start to decide, well, what do we think the outcome might be or the consequence might be of it? How likely is that to happen? And there's a whole sort of game, role-playing thing that goes on behind the scenes on that. And what do we do immediately? And then what do we do long-term to actually make this task a little bit safer? So a couple of things there around the media. And there are rights and wrongs on this, so you can actually get some scores around this and it gives them some education, which has been proven to be the best way to engage people. And then what's the long-term control? And you can even hear, it's very realistic, so it's a really useful thing to actually go through. And then it gives the opportunity to submit your responses to that. And there's a whole series of different things within that where you can actually intervene. So, you know, what would you say if you wanted to intervene with this person? How do you think that might go? Are they in Limbic? Because if you intervene on someone when they're in Limbic, guess what? You'll get a spray, yeah? So you've got to try and think about the right way to do it. And then there's a leaderboard thing that you can actually do, so you can create a little bit of competition around the sort of stuff that's there. And then the last thing, this is very practical that you can take away and do right now, is to think about what would your two-degree shift be out of this? Now, two-degree shift is a concept where we look at it, in aviation terms, for example, if you're flying from one place to another, say, from Australia to Brazil, if you set your navigation two degrees north of where you should be to get to your destination, by the time you get over to the other side of the world, the difference is you actually end up North America. But the two-degree shift at the beginning is so small and inconsequential that it doesn't really look as if you're doing a lot. You don't have to put a lot of energy into it, but as you get further and further into that journey, that two-degree shift becomes more impactful. And as an organisation, if you have a group of people who are all making a two-degree shift around how to be more safe, how can I be safer? Then organisationally, the culture changes and becomes safer. So there's a whole range of stuff around the two-degree shift, and it's a very simple process which actually you can look to think about now. So when you go away from here, knowing what you've learned from the different speakers today, what is it that you can make as a two-degree shift? You know, Stephen gave you a very simple request at the end of his presentation. If, you know, if you see someone, don't let them walk past. Ask them how they are. "Are you okay?" There's a very simple two-degree shift you can make. It doesn't have to be complicated, but something that if you do it and you start to become a habit, then you're making a shift and you're making a big impact. What can you do around safety? Another two-degree shift. What did you learn from this session? Hopefully you got something from it. How can I apply that back into my world, into my workplace? If you do want to find out more, I'm available here, or you can email me, my details will be available and I've got some cards on the table. We've got a lot of stuff and we work with a lot of different people, so we've got some experiences that could potentially help. And we've actually got some people on the ground here in Hobart as well, or in Tassie, that can support you in that. But I'll just open up, is there any questions?
What got you on this path?
What got me on that path? That's a really good question. I think like everyone else, when I was a little bit younger, I was a bit of a risk taker. I think we all are. As I started to get a little bit older and I became a father, I think at that point I realised that I can't keep taking the risks that I'm taking. So I developed a bit of a passion around that. In my time in Rio Tinto, I was nearly six years working in their global safety leadership area, going around the world and seeing some awful stuff that occurred. Just made me think about the fact that I don't want my children to ever suffer that type of experience with me. So that drives my passion around it. And from there, when I realised that was my passion, I found some people working down in Byron Bay, of all places, called the Jonah Group, which actually do a lot of that from that neuroscience point of view, which was just firmly for me is where I think we should be around safety. So once I found that, I get made redundant from Rio and I just live 30 minutes away from the office, I thought, this is great. So that's what got me into it, and that's what drives me is my passion, just to make sure I can make a difference for other people in the same way that, you know, I have been up until now.
Thanks for your presentation.
Pleasure.
The, just how do you factor in Limbic risk when you've got people that have a different perception? I think there's the public and the private self and how other people view them.
Yeah.
Is that, if people aren't self-aware, then it's difficult to do that too.
Yeah. Look, there's a session that I run which is basically around mindset, where you look at where your mind is at. And there's a concept that we use called above the line and below the line. And some of you may have heard this before, but when you're above the line, you're a better version of yourself than you are when you're below the line. Whatever mindset you're in, you demonstrate some behaviours which will quite easily show where you're at. You might not see it in yourself, but other people can see it in you. So what we do is we create that awareness through a series of activities that we run. When someone becomes more aware of the fact they're below the line, then you make a choice about whether you wanna stay there or not. Because sometimes it serves you well, have a good old whinge and a wallow, you know, and have a bitch and a moan about something. But if you're there for too long, it actually becomes unhelpful. So when you are there and you become aware that you're there, then you make a choice. To give you a very, sorry if I don't wanna overdo time here, but a very quick example of that I've used in my personal life is I do travel a lot. And as I travel, and I'm also very introverted, so I like, my personal time is very important to me and it's how I recharge my battery. Because my battery drains really quickly in front of a group of strangers, even though I do this for a living. And what was happening is I was going away for two, three days at a time. Then I would be driving home, and generally it would be from Brisbane, doing the hour and a half drive down to the Gold Coast where I live. And I would be coming in and the kids would be there. And as soon as I walked in through the door, the kids would be running up to me and go, "Ah, dad's back, dad's back." But I would be in a place of, "Oh, just get off me right now, you know? I've had a crap drive home, I've been away for three days, I'm feeling tired. You know, I haven't got my bag down, I wanna grab a beer and kick my shoes off." You know? So I'm really in that kind of, I was actually in a below the line mindset, I didn't realise it. And, you know, over time, what I realised was that was having a big impact on my relationship with my kids. So when I became aware of the above and below the line stuff, what I did was you can actually assume an identity of an above the line and you can pick a word. And you pick that word and that's who you are. So I picked a word called generous. I couldn't remember it for a minute. Generous, right? Which is unusual for a Scotsman. I'll get the jokes out before anyone else does. Generous is generous with my time, with my love, with my energy, with my attention. And so when I drove in through the driveway, I just literally looked in the mirror and said, "Who am I right now?" I'm grumpy, I'm, you know, I'm low of energy, I'm, you know, I'm sort of in a foul mood. Who do I need to be? I need to be generous. So I'm gonna be generous for the next five minutes. So I just become generous, even though it's fighting my instinct. And I walk in through the door, "Hey, kids, where are you?" Right? I'm actually shouting for them. They're all running up and they wanna tell me, and I'm going everywhere with them, because right at that moment in time, that's the most important thing. But strangely enough, and the brain works in a crazy way, but it starts to release these feel-good chemicals, you know, as things like that go. After a couple of minutes, the kids bugger off. They're not interested anymore, but you've actually been a different person for that couple of minutes. And the impact that has on them is incredible. So the relationship completely changes as a result. But funnily enough, what I found was it was really hard to go back below the line again, because I was actually up. So awareness is the first part of the answer, and then the choice that you make when you become aware of it is the second part. And we actually get people to understand that and then be able to assume their identity and move up there. And that's how we do it. I think that answers your question. I think that answers your question. I'm available, guys. I realise I'm out of time and Pamela's going to kick me off now. So thank you for your energy and your attention and appreciate that and hopefully I'll speak to you at some point in the future. Thank you.
We have Andrew Tunstall from WorkSafe Tasmania. Everybody wants to have a chat. Andrew is the Principal Mining Inspector with WorkSafe Tasmania. He will provide an overview of the current activities, trends and issues being experienced by the Mines Inspectorate Tasmanian Mines and Quarries and provide some practical tips for reducing risk. Thank you.
Thanks, Pam. Thanks, Pam. And yeah, like Jimmy, I'm one of these dual nationals. It's been causing so much trouble recently. You're probably here for my accent. I'm just going to give you a brief presentation on a couple of the issues that we're currently engaged in with the Tasmanian Mines Inspectorates. And one of our primary concerns, I suppose, at the moment, following some recent events has been the management of principal mining hazards. So I just want to talk a little bit about that, what they are, how they can be managed and areas where we think improvements can be made. Then I'll talk a little bit about the Quarry Improvement Project that Willard's been heavily involved in, along with Yvonne. And then finally, just touch on a couple of other areas for improvement which we think we're going to be focusing on next year and we'd like the industry to have a think about I'm getting on a bit these days, so I've had to make myself some notes. So I guess most of you probably know who the Mines Inspectorate is, so I won't dwell too long on this, but we're essentially a Department of WorkSafe Tasmania. There are six of us in the state, including the Chief Inspector of Mines, who's based at Rosney Park. We have two Mines Inspectors based at Rosney Park and three of us based in Burney. So broadly speaking, the Burney office covers the West Coast, the North and the North-West of the state and the Rosney Park inspectors cover the South. There is some overlap at times for investigations and audits, but generally that's how we run So the work of the Mining Inspectorate is largely centred around assessing how sites are managing their principal mining hazards. And I'll ask the question, because I know Henty's been involved in a review recently, but what is the definition of a principal mining hazard? Yes, please.
The way we're handling principal mining hazards is either simple fatalities multiple times over or a multiple fatality twice.
Exactly right. So the problem we have in mining is because of the high energy sources we use to crush rock and transport rock in the quantities we do, a lot of the hazards that we deal with fall under that definition of a principal mining hazard. So they have to be managed through a higher level of risk management than just a risk assessment. They have to be managed through what we call principal hazard management plans. The other point I wanted to make is a lot of these principal mining hazards are actually dynamic in nature, so they might vary through the shift or they might vary through a typical working week. So for example, if we think about something like the risk of inrush, obviously when the workings are a long way away from the body of water, the risk is actually quite low. But as the workings approach the body of work, body of water, particularly if they intersect a geological structure which can connect the two, then that risk can suddenly increase. And that's in contrast to a lot of industries where you're essentially dealing with hazards that you fully understand and which are reasonably static in nature. The other thing is it's generally agreed that the usual lag indicators that we use to track a company's safety performance, like lost time injury rate and total injury frequency rate, are not necessarily good indicators of the fatal risk profile of a mining operation. Because the hazards that cause lost time injuries are often very different from principal mining hazards. So back and neck injuries and mental stress, the hazards that cause those are obviously different from the hazards that might cause an underground fire or explosion. So I'll talk you through an example now which illustrates that along with some other points. So what happened here was a jumbo had broken down in a heading. If I can get this thing working. Oh, okay. Well, a jumbo had broken down here in a working. He was doing some stripping for a cutting in here. And two fitters arrived to start working on the jumbo and as they started fixing the jumbo, one of the fitters noticed some small rocks falling out of the backs and hitting the roof of the canter. So he was a fairly experienced fitter and he recognised that that was probably the sign of an impending rockfall, so he withdrew from the area with his offside. They went around to the back of the LV and they were standing there when the two, the jumbo operator and his offside arrived from crib. So the four of them were standing behind that LV, just having a chat about what had happened, when there was a sudden rockfall of about 200 tonnes, which fell basically So that was the rockfall. You can see it's buried, it's buried the canter, it buried the LV and it buried part of the jumbo. So it was very lucky that they withdrew when they did, because if the rockfall had happened five or 10 minutes earlier, or if it had happened, or rather if the fitter hadn't noticed the signs and withdrawn, that incident would certainly have led to one or two fatalities. There are some fairly interesting points that come out of that incident, which I'll just share with you now. The first thing is that there was nothing in that site's lost time injury frequency record that suggested that a catastrophic accident was about to occur. The LTIFR was quite low and the trend was quite flat, so there were no indications that anything was wrong. The second point is that, as I said earlier, the reason a fatality was averted was because the fitter recognised the signs that things weren't quite right and withdrew from the area. And this is a really important point when you're developing principal hazard management plans, to realise that it's that last-minute intervention by the person at the coalface, if you like, that is often the difference between a fatal accident and a near miss like this one. And those are obviously integrated into what we call the TARPs, the Trigger Action Response Plans, which give clear instructions to the operators as to what they have to do if they notice unusual conditions developing. The third point I just wanted to share was that after this rockfall occurred, a much more conservative ground support regime was installed in areas which were being mined adjacent to the geological structure along which the failure occurred. So it was essentially a, it's sort of hard to show you here, but it was a steeply dipping fault structure which came in something like this along the sidewall. Now, that was put in recognition of the fact that it hadn't been possible to predict the rockfall before it occurred, because although kinematic analysis was done on the area, there was no horizontal joint set as such, which would have allowed the model to predict that the block was going to fail. The failure plane along which it occurred was essentially a series of very small minor joints which linked up because the weight of the block was essentially pulling down and allowed the failure to occur. And since the increased ground support was put in, they've had no further incidents of that nature at the site. And again, that just illustrates the importance of thoroughly investigating these high potential incidents and doing what you can to make sure that risk controls are increased. Okay, I'll just briefly, conscious of the time, I'll just briefly touch on principal hazard management plans. So principal hazard management plans were originally introduced following a couple of disasters. One was the Mara disaster, where a large explosion killed a number of workers. The second one was the Gretley inrush, which occurred in a coal mine which accidentally mined into flooded workings. And the coroners that were investigating those accidents recommended the development of principal hazard management plans because the legislation that existed at the time was fairly prescriptive and it just didn't allow that risk-based assessment of the hazards and the risks on the site. Originally, they were designed for natural hazards like inrush and gas, but the definition, as we've heard, has been expanded to include any hazard which can result in multiple fatalities in one incident or single fatalities in a number of incidents. So in a typical underground mine, that will cover perhaps 10 or 15 principal hazards. I'll now move on to the Quarry Improvement Project, which we've been running for a couple of years now and which has achieved some very good results, as well as allowing us to get lost on numerous occasions trying to find small quarries and interact with some So for a number of years, the level of resourcing in the Mines Inspectorates, along with the number of notifiable incidents that we're investigating, didn't really allow us to do much proactive work at the quarries. We investigated some accidents, but we didn't really put in place a proactive programme. However, in 2015, a combination, I suppose, of a reduction in notifiable incidents from underground mines, along with recommendations from Professor Michael Quindlin, who was carrying out an audit of the Mines Inspectorate, that we actually start proactively visiting quarries, led us to develop a proactive quarry improvement programme. Yeah, I'll just mention that after we visited a couple of quarries unannounced and started looking around at some of the hazards and risks, we realised that at most quarries, there was too much work to be carried out. For example, with one improvement notice, there was a lot of work and so we decided to adopt a staged approach where we essentially started with what we considered to be the highest risks and then gradually worked our way through the lower risks with the operators over a period of probably three visits, which was about 18 months. Yeah, we found that it was a two-tier industry. The quarries that were owned by the large national companies like Boral were actually very good. They had quite sophisticated safety management systems in place. They had toolbox talks, they had a good safety culture and their machine was well-guarded. Whereas some of the smaller operators, particularly the one-man operators, left a fair bit to be desired and caused us to raise our eyebrows initially. So one of the challenges we did encounter in the quarries was that many of the smaller operators just weren't familiar with modern risk management techniques, but they were quite willing to carry out improvements if we gave them clear directions. They were struggling with things like risk assessments and risk management, but if we said to them, look, you've got to guard that machine, they would guard it, there was no problem. So we weren't quite sure how to address that because the legislation is obviously risk-based legislation. So in the end, we developed a quarry checklist, which was basically taken from the health and safety legislation, but it gave operators a clear set of instructions as to what we expected to see when we visited their quarries. We provided that to the quarry operators and we told them that when we visited the quarries, this is what we're going to be looking at. So you've now got an opportunity to get it fixed up before our next visit. I think Willard's probably fair to say some have taken up the offer and others haven't. Yeah, so the quarry project, it's been very interesting and it's given us some fairly amusing moments. One visit that Willard and I were involved in, we decided to take a UHF radio along in case we had to communicate with trucks on the haul road. And as we turned up at this quarry, we saw a bunch of blokes in the distance, no PPE on. And we could hear them on the radio discussing who we might be. Finally realised it was a government vehicle and there was a flurry of reflective vests and safety glasses. By the time we got there, they were all perfectly dressed. So yeah, there is still some work to do in the quarries of reducing risks and our current focus is on reviewing the systems that are in place for controlling airborne dust, which I'll touch on a bit later on. However, constructive working relationships have been developed, not just with the quarry operators, but also with the IQA. John's been a fantastic champion of the project and the CCAA and I've got no doubt that as time goes on, we'll see further improvements. I'll just move on now to a couple of areas where we believe OHNS improvements can be made in the industry. But I think I've missed a slide, so I'll just go back. Yep. I'll just briefly take you through some of the things we saw at the quarries. So as I say, the larger quarries were actually quite good. They had good safety management systems in place. This was fairly typical where a drum was guarded at one stage, but a fitter had cut a hole in the guard so that he could grease the bearings. And really, that was just a question of us explaining that they can extend the greasing point outside the guard and get the guard repaired. And this one here was an ammonium nitrate storage container, which was probably 15 metres from the main office of the quarry. And over time, flammable materials had been allowed to accumulate, so we had pallets. There was a big row of gum trees at the back here, a couple of oil drums. And quite interesting, when we spoke to the quarry operator, he really couldn't see the risk. And when we explained to him that, you know, if a decent bushfire got going and the ammonium nitrate storage container was heated, it could explode and basically take out the entire office, then he very quickly removed the vegetation and just really through basic housekeeping significantly decreased the risk.
So Andrew, how many quarries, now it's quarries, how many quarries in total are responsible?
It's a good question, Dennis. We've probably got about 50 Level 2 quarries, which are the sort of medium to large ones. And we really don't know. We suspect there are probably hundreds of small ones dotted around.
Yeah, well, there's 360.
Yeah, it could well be. 360, is it?
Official ones, 360.
Yes.
Then you have the big yard, the garden, it's a big job, isn't it?
It is. Realistically, we can only get to the larger sites with a higher risk, so we tend not to visit the very small quarries unless there's an issue. So the three critical areas for improvement, I think, that we'll be focusing on next year. The first one is the management of critical controls. The second one is occupational health and hygiene. And the third one is the development of health and safety reps. And I'll just briefly touch on those before lunch. And I'll just briefly touch on those before lunch. So many, yeah, many of the incidents we investigate involve critical controls which are either absent or have failed. By critical controls, we mean controls which if you remove them, it significantly increases the chance of an unwanted event happening, or perhaps controls that span across several hazards. So an example is refuge chambers in underground mines. Obviously, if there's an underground fire or an explosion that develops an irreaspirable atmosphere, we need a place where miners can go, which can sustain life for the period of time it takes to extinguish the fire, or to rescue them. So most mines would have, I'm not sure how many you guys have at Rosebury, perhaps more than 20? Yep. Most mines would have lots of these refuge chambers scattered around at intervals of about 700, 750 metres underground. So although these are critical controls, when we do our inspections, we often find problems with refuge chambers. We find inadequate drinking water, we find batteries have failed, we find communications not working, sometimes we find structural damage where they've moved the chambers. Now, these are critical pieces of equipment, they need to be operated, operational 24/7, 365 days of the year, because an underground fire can happen at any time. And the last thing you want is for operators to turn up at a refuge chamber and find it's not working as it should. So we asked the question, why is it that for such critical controls as refuge chambers, mines inspectors are finding issues, and the internal inspection regimes at the mines aren't picking them up? We think it's because there's no real quality assurance process in place to check that the inspections that are supposed to be being done on refuge chambers are actually being done to the standard that is required. We can think of numerous examples of why that may not be the case. The inspector is sick, not the mines inspector, the internal inspector is sick, there's been a change of rosters, or perhaps the checklist is inadequate that he's using for inspections. But the reality is that critical controls like refuge chambers should be 100% all the The other thing we sometimes find is that because there are no performance standards written for refuge chambers at some operations, refuge chambers may have defects detected by the inspector, but while those defects are being corrected, they're still left in use. So although they're not 100% effective at that time, they're still being used as refuge chambers. And that probably reflects a lack of written performance standards that says, for example, if two batteries have failed, the refuge chamber has to be withdrawn from service, and all people have to be withdrawn from that area that's been serviced by the refuge So I guess a lot of you would be familiar with this. This is a critical control management document, which is called Health and Safety Critical Control Management Good Practice Guide, produced by the ICMM. It provides a very, very good description of how critical controls should be managed. It includes performance standards, it includes accountability, and it also includes reporting up the chain of command to the site senior officers. So the site senior officers should know that at all times, their refuge chambers are operating And we spoke a bit earlier about the fact that LTIFR is not a great indicator of the fatal risk at a mine. The documents also contain some suggestions as to how the performance of the critical controls could be used to track the way critical controls are being managed over time. So, in this case, you can see that this critical control has been effective during, say, 75% of the time here, and that's gradually increased to close to 100% of the time, which indicates that the management of that critical control is improving. It's difficult to come up with lag indicators for some of the principal mining hazards, but you might use something like the number of high potential incidents that are related to that risk. And if you see that one going down, and the critical control performance going up, then it gives you some indication that your critical control management is improving. So the second, yeah, the second area for improvement is occupational health, which has been brought into focus really over the past few years by three events. The first one of those was the International Agency for Research into Cancer announcing that diesel particulates cause cancer in humans, that was in 2012. Obviously, it had been suspected before then, but not proven. The second thing was the emergence of the black lung disease in Queensland last year. Black lung was a coal mining disease which was thought to have been eradicated, but reemerged. And the third thing is the concerns expressed by the Thoracic Society of Australia and New Zealand, that silicosis is actually reemerging in Australia, particularly for people working with manufactured concrete kitchen bench tops which contain high degrees of silica, obviously not wearing proper respiratory protection, and not suppressing the dust. So it's a concern, because all those diseases are wholly preventable, but it does require, I think, an increased focus from the underground mines, particularly in things like diesel particulate filters, closed cabs, dust suppression, dust monitoring, respiratory protection, and so on. We don't want a similar thing to develop in Tasmania. And finally, I'm aware lunch is on the way, but I'll finish off quickly. The third area for improvement is the development and mentoring of health and safety reps. Some companies do this really well, so they give their health and safety reps the basic training, the one-week course, and then they regularly engage with them, they use them for investigations, they use them for audits, they interact with mines inspectors when we come to site. And those health and safety reps develop really constructive relationships with mine management, and they provide a very useful conduit for transmitting information up and down the chain. Other sites elect health and safety reps, they put them through the basic training course, but then they put them back on a truck or a bogger, and because there's often no coverage for those reps, they often don't see management until the next safety committee meeting, which depending on their shift roster could be two or three months down the track. So those guys don't really develop the confidence to constructively engage with management, and they're certainly not being used to their full potential as intended by the legislation. So I don't think there's a simple solution, but we want to work with the industry next year, and take some examples of sites that do engage with their health and safety reps, and try and get some of that knowledge to the sites that don't. So, yeah, that's about it really. I'll close now, because lunch is on the way, but thanks very much for listening, and I'm happy to take any questions either now or during lunch.
Certainly the pressures that I saw in the mining industry, through tough times, where mining companies have overspent or spent unwisely, made them turn a blind eye to low probability, high consequence events. In terms of pushing through those sorts of barriers in Tasmania, have you tried to engage that level of complacency from time to time?
Yeah, it's a good question. I suppose the development of the principal hazard management plans, which only took place a few years ago, has focused mine management on those potentially catastrophic events. They've had to consider them as part of the development of the principal hazard management plan, and I think that has partly brought them into focus. But I still think there's a tendency in underground mines, because you're dealing with so many hazards, to treat some of those risks in a similar way as you treat some of the less, perhaps the less catastrophic risks. Any other questions? Okay, thanks very much.
So we're just at the point of nearly wrapping up. So thank you for your participation today. As I said at the beginning of the session, if you get a chance to look at the Better Work Tasmania website, it's free to join, then you will get further information about sessions like we've had today. And even if it's not held in Queenstown, you can still watch on, because we'll either livestream or record the session, so that's the handy thing about this programme. I'm sure you all agree, it's been fascinating, the topic areas today, everything from the challenges of mental health, to limbic risk, and then finally into the Mines Inspectorate, and how we're hoping to keep improving things in that space. So if there's anything else that you would like to comment about, or any other questions at all, just to finish off, we have the lunch just coming out shortly, so by all means, stay and chat some more, and network, and find out some things that you may not have found out about if you hadn't been here today. Thank you again, and thank you to the AAMA for partnering this event, along with the Safety Institute of Australia. And again, a safe journey back to where you're going, and have a great Christmas, because that's on the way next, isn't it? Thank you very much.